...is from Martin Luther King Jr. And he stated, "The function of education is to teach one to think intensively and to think critically." Intelligence plus character. That is the goal of true education. And with that, we'll ask Ms. Perry to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Well, I would ask for you to respectfully stand, but since you did that, that was wonderful. Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, and may be seated.
So, we're ready for a motion to adopt the agenda? Any discussion? Next on the agenda is public communications. We have none. So, ready for school highlights? See Dr. Anderson going to the podium.
Thank you, Ms. Kruger. And Ms. Kruger, we'll be showing a video that today is well, right?
Yes.
Well, and perhaps Ms. Kruger and I should both share this podium this today, since she has an announcement as well as we have a video. Let me start with saying that Miss Harvesters, and I'm sure they'll share a little bit of what they do, but they have been such an amazing partner. Can we ask the Harvesters team, I say Ms. Jessica, as a student, and Mr. Steve to come on out? For those of you that do not know, when I was hired for this job, we met in February, right, before I ever started? And we talked about all of what Harvesters was doing, but then we also talked about Mobile Pantry, support to Sheldon, and a variety of other things, all of which they said yes to without a blink of the eye. And so, they give thousands of pounds of food away a month and continue to look to do more as they are planning to support our community cover this upcoming year. So, I'm gonna leave to them to share a little bit, but before they do, Mrs. Kruger will show a little thank you video that we have for Harvesters, give an announcement, and then we'll pick back up with this recognition.
This project with Harvesters initially started with just parents, parents that are by the office, and we're having, you know, heart-to-heart conversations about how to help their students, how to, you know, help them become more educated and work hard at school and that kind of thing.
We feed approximately 100 to 120, I believe, every time. It fluctuates, but we feed a lot of people.
One of the things that I noticed is that all of the cars, everybody is extremely grateful of the service that we're providing, or Harvesters is providing them. So, it's really cool to be able to help out.
So, with the help of Harvesters, those kids are getting good substantial food to put on their plate and things that they enjoy.
We just thank you for meeting the Jardine needs, but most importantly, meeting the needs of parents who are just trying to, you know, provide healthy foods and provide, you know, the basic needs for their children.
We care about everybody, and we're gonna feed everybody. So, thank you, Harvesters. You are wonderful, and I hope to work with you for many more years.
Well, the other thing we're gonna talk about, we were notified yesterday--
This project with Harvesters initially started with--
We were notified yesterday of some exciting news, but Steve just shared that they're gonna share that, and I don't wanna steal his thunder, so I'm gonna let him share with you about that network.
Well, thank you for inviting us here. I'm Steve Davis. I'm the chief operating officer for Harvesters, the Community Food Network, and this is Jessica Kair. She's our director of program services and oversees all the agencies and programs that we run in our Harvesters program. I have to say, I've been with Harvesters now two years. I spent 20 years in education, and so it's, the last two years, my first time at a board meeting, and spent 20 years of going to board meetings either monthly or every other, or twice a month. So, it's good to be back. Again, as opposed to be here this evening, we just wanted to share a little bit about Harvesters and what we do, just in case you're not familiar, but then also to more specifically talk about our partnership that we've had over the years with Topeka Public Schools. Both of our organizations, of course, share dedication to children and make, wanna make sure that they have the resources they need to thrive and be successful and grow into successful adults in our community. And what we know is that when children have access to enough healthy food, they do better in school, they get better grades, they have better behavior, and they have fewer absences. But currently, in Shawnee County, we know that 20% of the children, almost 8,000, are at risk of going to bed hungry every night. And it's because of the partnership that we have with the agencies here in Topeka, but also, of course, with the school district, that we're working together to ensure that those children don't go to bed hungry. And so, we appreciate that partnership for sure. Our mission at Harvesters is feeding hungry people today and working to end hunger tomorrow. We're a regional food bank, part of the Feeding America network of food banks, and so we serve 26 counties in our service area, in both northwestern Missouri, we serve 10 counties in Missouri, and 16 counties in northeastern Kansas. So, we have a pretty wide geographic area that we're serving. In that area, we have 364,000 food insecure individuals that aren't sure where their next meal is coming from. And in Shawnee County, we have about 25,500 individuals that aren't sure where their next meal is coming from. Some of you may know that we operate a facility here in Topeka, downtown Topeka, 215 Southeast Quincy Street. You can see it right out by 70 as you make the jog coming into or out of downtown, depending on which direction you're going, right there off the overpass. And then we have another facility in Kansas City, Missouri, on the east side, not too far from Arrowhead and Coffin Stadium. What we do is we provide household products and food to a network of almost 620 agencies, and then they in turn feed individuals that are hungry and provide those household products to them. And so, that can include things like emergency food pantries, community kitchens, homeless shelters, childcare centers, school districts, and others. And then we also educate about the issues of hunger and the importance of good nutrition. Last year, so our fiscal year ends in June, and last year, we distributed 52 million pounds of food in our 26 counties, and more than 17 million pounds of that was produced. So, you can tell that nutrition's important to us and the health of the individuals we're serving is important to us. In Shawnee County, last year, we distributed four and a half million pounds of food and almost a million and a half pounds of that was produced. So, proportionally, you can tell it's a fair amount that we distributed. And we have a robust network here in Shawnee County, which we're proud of. We have 73 agency partners that feed individuals, and they operate over 130 programs. Just to highlight a couple things with the Topeka Public Schools, 'cause there's a variety of things we could highlight, but it's just been, we've had a long history with the school district, and we're proud of that, and certainly, we hope you are, and thank you for the video. That was very nice, 'cause we know that you are. And we look forward to the future, but just a few things we wanted to highlight is we work with 19 elementary schools to provide back snack programs. It's an emergency weekend hunger relief program that students are able to take home with them over the weekend. We work with five high schools to provide a brown bag program that is a discreet program that allows students to have some emergency food after school, if in fact that's needed. And then, of course, as highlighted in the video, last year, we were proud that we were able to start the Mobile Pantry at Jardine Elementary School and at Capital City High School. That program, by the way, is neat on a variety of levels. One thing is students are involved, so it's a wonderful thing for the students to be serving food insecure in the community, which is just a great thing that we're proud of, and you certainly should be proud of. But also, we're feeding hungry people, and so that program, those programs have fed 2,500 households, about 160,000 pounds of food. So, it's also making a significant difference here in Topeka. You know, we partner a variety of other ways. I could go on. We do nutrition education, we help fill in with some summer feeding. The other important thing, though, I think for me to mention, is this is truly a partnership and a collaboration, because as you all know, we're continuing on what you do every day, and you're continuing on what we do, in that you operate the National School Lunch and Breakfast Program, which feeds students that can pay, but also free to do students that otherwise may not have a meal. The school district does operate some summer feeding sites, which is an important component in making sure kids have food for the summer. I know, 'cause I've been 20 years in education, you have incredibly dedicated staff, teachers, principals, counselors, nurses, that are working with students every day to talk about proper nutrition, to talk about healthy eating, to talk about the importance of nutrition and education, and how those two things intersect. So, we're just continuing on the work you're doing, and hopefully, vice versa. So, as we look forward to the future, we just launched our strategic plan at the beginning of this month, our new three-year strategic plan. We just finished our last strategic plan. And part of that plan challenges us to enhance and strengthen our partnerships, and then also explore new partnerships we can develop, or new programs we can develop, that really stabilize families, so that we can hopefully reduce food insecurity or eliminate food insecurity. And so, that's a different part of our mission, feeding hungry people today and then working to end hunger tomorrow. And that really takes stabilizing an entire family, so that they don't have to rely upon emergency food assistance. And so, that's an exciting new thing that we're excited to do, and we hope that we can partner with the school district on that and expanding the programs we have. But as Dr. Anderson mentioned, also looking at new programs we can do, ways we can work with school pantry. So, as we kind of wrap up this evening, we're just grateful for the partnership that we have had over the years with the school district. It's been wonderful for me to get to know Dr. Anderson, 'cause we both kind of started not too far apart from each other, and so it was fun to have been working with her over the last year. And then, as was highlighted, we're honored to mention tonight, and are honored to recognize the partnership that we have had with Topeka Public Schools and the work that we're doing together to feed hungry children by presenting the district one of our network partnership awards, our Circle of Hope's award banquet, which is in September. And so, certainly, we hope you're able to join us. This is, if you're not familiar with the Circle of Hope Awards, it's a kind of an academy awards, if you will, where we recognize the partners in our 26 counties that are doing amazing work. And independent of us even being here, it was an application, and Topeka Public Schools was recognized, and it's gonna be highlighted in September for the amazing work that you do. So, we're excited to announce that, and we're excited to recognize Topeka Public Schools with that. So, again, we thank you for inviting us here tonight, and hope you have a great rest of the week.
And with that, we have certificate of both of you. So, we invited you to recognize you, and you started recognizing us. So, circus above, so. Thank you for all the--
All right.
So, all we highlight, no, we take a picture with the board. Board members, can you come off? So, I think, I believe this is our--
We stand right here.
There you go.
That work?
She's our--
She's been driving--
She's got the same--
Pass that that way, perfect. Either right, either--
And Doug--
Last week--
We always love it, like--
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Take care.
So, we are ready for disposition of business by consent?
Sorry, I'm new at this. I gotta get my cheat sheet out. I'm, wait just a minute, we need to--
Personnel--
What word is personnel?
So, it's 9.1.
Oh, I find it. Okay, 9.1. Thank you, that was what I was looking for. I move that the Board of Education approve that items of business by consent, exception would be for 9.1 personnel report, be that we pulled out and handled separately, and authorized the board president or the superintendent to sign a special project and purchasing contracts for, and on behalf of the Board of Education.
Any discussion? Yes?
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to, I requested that item 9.1, the personnel report, be pulled from the total consent agenda and handled separately, so I can recuse myself. While it is not a violation of any kind of conflict of interest, if you have a spouse who's a member of the bargaining unit, you're voting on something that is positively affecting or negatively affecting bargaining unit, I still like to make it a practice when my spouse is called out by name specifically in the personnel report, and this time, it's for the full language CNA summer meetings. When we handle that, I'll be stepping out. That's why I requested. Thank you for your indulgence, members.
Any further discussion? We're ready to vote.
The votes now open.
Could we have a motion to, okay, personnel report 9.1? Any discussion? Ready to vote? Open my hand. All in favor? All opposed?
I can do that.
I can hear you.
We are now ready for the superintendent's report?
At this time, I'll go slightly out of order, in that the principals are here, and I know they are preparing this evening for teachers to return next week. The principals are here, the high school principals, to answer any questions you might have about school schedules. So, will Mr. Dick and Mrs. Morrissey and our new principal, Ms. Perry, please come to the podium? They don't have a presentation for you, rather, they sent you their schedule, their high school schedule, and they just wanted to be available tonight to answer any questions, should you have any. If you don't have any questions, then they will just head on. The schedule that they just gave you is also on the screen. Over the course of that schedule, I will share that one item you should know. First of all, all three schools have the same schedule, therefore, you only see one schedule on the screen. The other item I do wanna make mention, in some cases on the, if I say this incorrectly, please do correct me, team. In some cases, the block day, the seminar day, is used as seminar for some schools, but some schools are using that seminar as just a big guide for, potentially for a class. Did I say that right? As opposed to using that for a seminar day. I think sometimes that switches up, but the times are aligned accordingly across the district at all three schools. So, I turn it over to the board, if you have any questions for our three principals. And Mr. Dick, was there anything you wanted to add, sir?
Well, we would like to ask, within this framework of a schedule, there's just a little freedom to adjust time within this basic framework. So, to match the needs of the school for the week or what we're doing at that period of time, so whether that be, when you look at, for instance, Monday, if a school for a week or for a period of time wanted to do that schedule regularly as their schedule within this framework of time, that we have some freedom within this framework to be able to do some of those things. If a school on Wednesday and Thursday would prefer the block schedule for the third period, let's split that over two days, and they have the seminar block one day, and that block one day, that we'd be allowed to have a little freedom to work within those parameters, but ultimately, we all realize that we need more intervention time built into our days and time to work with kids during that for college and career readiness, for interventions on state assessments, for planning, for schedules, all of those things, that we'd be within this framework that we, which is the basic framework of the schedule that we did five years ago, I believe, four years ago.
And Mr. Dick, to that point, I saw Ms. Morrissey was nodding her head about what you were sharing. Does that impact Topeka High? Is that a specific example for Topeka High that you might wanna speak to briefly?
Yes, thank you. We're in, within the framework, but ours still looks very similar to the one approved. We have added the seminar, and ours is block. So, we have the three skinny days, where we have, we call them eight periods now, we call it seminar fourth period because of maintaining the block on Wednesday and Thursday. And then, we have all of the seminar time on Thursday, and Wednesday is a full block day of academic classes. So, it's, the times are similar, we can still get to Worcester Tech and to TCAC and those kinds of programming, because our seminar falls in the same timeframe, but we maintain the skinny, we call them skinny days, Monday, Tuesday, Friday, similar to that. And then, our block days look more traditional than they did before, so we don't have third hour every day, but the framework is the same. And then, as Dr. Anderson alluded to, what we're doing within seminar, we make use of ACT prep for kids who don't wanna give up an academic hour, those kinds of things, as well as the mentoring, intervention, and other things that we're already doing as a part of that period.
I turn it over to the board to ask questions for clarification and/or, Ms. Perry, did you have other that you wanted to speak to?
Absolutely. In the spirit of transparency, one of the reasons that he talked about keeping it within that framework is preferably, there will be not a lot of block for us at Highland Park. I really like those seven-period days, that Monday, Tuesday, Friday schedule for most days, but knowing that we will need some time for specialized assemblies, some of those non-curricular kind of things that happen during the week sometimes that come up, that we would be able to adjust to some of those other days as well. The reason that our team looked at the seven-period day is our behavioral incidents increased with those 90-minute block periods. I happened to be there and observe that on April the 26th, when I came and visited for myself, didn't even realize that was the day that I was there. Many more children were in the hallway unsupervised, and there wasn't a lot of bell-to-bell teaching happening for that 90 minutes. And so, I saw that as being difficult, and with some of the skill gaps that our kids have, if our goal is gonna be by student, by standard, by being able to have that repetitive exposure to the content every single day, it's going to be better, so I believe for our kids, and that's what our team looked at.
Okay. Any questions?
I have a couple of questions, and then also just some general comments. I can say, speak for myself just personally as a board member, how pleased I was to see the schedule and to see the way that you work together, and the way that it addressed board concerns from the past in terms of particular, particularly having an excessive number of those 90-minute periods. That was something that, many years ago, we came to an understanding that we didn't believe that that was the best way for kids to learn, except for perhaps certain, certain classes, certain teachers. And so, I think we were always willing to compromise by allowing this modified block, because for particular subjects such as foreign language, or science labs, or other periods that may like to make use of that extended time. Couple of questions. One thing, when we originally went off the block, and we went from eight periods, which we used to have, to seven, one of the huge advantages we thought came from that was that every individual subject gained 30 minutes per week of instruction time. And so, I'm assuming that by working the seminar time in every day, that's not going to be quite that gain. How does this compare to, say, last year Topeka High's schedule? What was the individual minute time per class?
What we ended up losing was three to four minutes in each of the classes on three days only. So, we didn't lose a lot of time to get 24 minutes. We have 24 minutes of seminar on Monday, Tuesday, and Friday.
So, you're talking about nine minutes per class period, something like that?
Yes, per week.
Per week? Okay, very good. Please hear that. I'd like to hear a little more detail about how you foresee using the seminar time and how that's going to be different from what we've done in the past.
For us, we have a lot of required anti-bullying, the sexual harassment, a lot of those activities. So, that's a part of that. The career cruising, so all the things we're doing with that within our classes, and we want our Trojan Time teachers to be an extension of the counseling center and truly be mentors for students. There's also gonna be time built in, probably on Mondays, we're polishing, where they will visit with their Trojan Time students about academia and behavior, and focus in on things they can do to support and help students in those classes. So, we really want them to be steady every day, see them every day, and get to know kids. And generally, they might have a student as a student in a class that's graded. We have an ability to have a daily mentor, and someone who has students for all four years, that can be an advocate in both behavioral situations with the restorative practices, to be someone who can advocate with parents as they get to know them. We also have extended that into our parent-teacher conferences, and we invite them. We changed the format last year, as many of you are aware, and went to a cafeteria style, literally, in the cafeteria and in the gym, and they invited them. We started that a year ago, and what they learned is they didn't know them well, because they only saw them one day a week, and they only had it for 30 minutes before they moved. So, 30 minutes one day a week didn't give us that relationship that we were looking for. So, they do invite them and schedule the conferences with the Trojan Time teacher. And then, after they're done, and they give the grade card to them and talk about what they might wanna do and all the things they know about the child, then they move around and see the other teachers. So, we'll grow even more in that partnership of what that teacher looks like in the life of that child as they go through school.
It reminds me in some ways of what we do with Avid, with having a daily, and so it's kind of extending some, right? Some of those concepts and teaching this study.
Our Avid site team, which is now also our leadership team we merged, has even talked about growing into where we could actually do tutorials within those classes, which the tutorial part of Avid is something, it's very valuable. So, students could help one another as a part of that, and that's something we've talked about long-term.
It's very exciting. I would also say, just as a comment to Ms. Perry, that I personally, you know, would be comfortable with allowing more seven-period days as well, since the concern more was of excessive length, not, but I only speak for myself as board member, so I'll let other board members jump in. Thank you.
Any other questions from board members? Or comments? You guys got off easy. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, team, for the excellent work you've done with creating that new schedule. And the next item, Blue Cross Blue Shield update. Our Blue Cross Blue Shield representatives are here, and we welcome you to the podium.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson, the board. All right, this is something new for me. I had a PowerPoint put together, pretty old-school, and I just chicken-scratch it for my notes typically. I'm Donna Pashman. I have a new person with me, Jared Ignoto. He is a new group consultant that I've assigned to your guys' account, so we'll work in tandem together. This was his first, is his first board meeting, and I kind of threw a DM that I was gonna make him do it, and he didn't run out the door, but almost. We changed the format last year, as many of you are aware, and went to a cafeteria style, literally in the cafeteria and in the gym. And they invited them. We started that a year ago and what they learned is they didn't know them well because they only saw them one day a week and they only had it for 30 minutes before they moved. So 30 minutes one day a week didn't give us that relationship that we were looking for. So they do invite them and schedule the conferences with the Trojan Time teacher. And then after they're done and they give the grade card to them and talk about what they might want to do and all the things they know about the child, then they move around and see the other teachers. So we'll grow even more in that partnership of what that teacher looks like in the life of that child as they go through school.
It reminds me in some ways of what we do with Avid, with having a daily, and so it's kind of extending some, right? Some of those concepts and teaching this to these kids.
Our Avid site team, which is now also our leadership team we merged, has even talked about growing into where we could actually do tutorials within those classes, which the tutorial part of Avid is something, it's very valuable. So students could help one another as a part of that. That's something we've talked about long-term.
It's very exciting. I would also say, just as a, as a comment to Ms. Perry, that I personally, you know, would be comfortable with allowing more seven-period days as well, since the concern more was of excessive length, not, but I only speak for myself as board member, so I'll let other board members jump in. Thank you.
Any other questions from board members or comments? You guys got off easy. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, team, for the excellent work you've done with creating that new schedule. And the next item, Blue Cross Blue Shield update. Our Blue Cross Blue Shield representatives are here. We welcome you to the podium.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson, the board. All right, this is something new for me. I had a PowerPoint put together. Pretty old school and I just chicken scratch it for my notes typically. I'm Donna Pashman. I have a new person with me, Jared Ignoto. He is a new group consultant that I've assigned to your guys' account, so we'll work in tandem together. This was his first, is his first board meeting and I kind of threw a DM that I was going to make him do it and he didn't run out the door, but almost. So I'm going to talk a little bit about the 2017 renewal, which I basically just did. There's been no increase for seven years. One of the things that Mr. Robbins asked me to put together and discuss was, what are the trends? What did Blue Cross Blue Shield of Kansas see in our book of business for large groups? And so I prepared a slide to talk about that. Had you looked more like our book of business, what would the rates be seven years later? So there is going to be a new benefit. It's called telehealth. That is going to be eligible or on the plan as of October 1st, so I'll talk a bit about that. And then I'll kind of talk a bit about the wellness program you guys have in place and some of the things that we're currently doing. Thank you. Did you see that look of panic on my face? When I, when I went to my manager and said, I need a PowerPoint, and she's like, the look on your face is horrific. And I said, I can't do this. And she's like, I got it. I had it in five minutes. So she can read my chicken scratch. Okay, so we talked about the trends. This piece right here talks from, shows from 2011 what our average large group increase or decrease was for the year. So in 2011, it was 9.1%. We started at the starting rate, which is your 51356 is your single rate. We said, okay, if it was 9.1%, what would that increase be on a monthly basis? It was 4673, which would have taken the single premium to 56029. And you can just see we've done that. In 2012, it was 3.4%. 2013, it was 6.3. An anomaly in '14, it was 0.5. '13 was 11.3, 11.7. And for 2017, we only have a couple of quarters to go on, 12%. That could average out differently at the end of the year. But if you take all that together, it would be an increase at $339.66. Or if we gave you the rate today, that single rate would look to be 85322. So if you look at the total cost avoidance, and I just took that 33966, times it by the number of contracts you have, which right now is 2,259, that's $9.2 million. I mean, it's just phenomenal what the district has done, what the employees have done in becoming better stewards of their health care. So a big hand to them. Any questions on this slide?
No real questions, but just a comment, how remarkable I think it is for employees. I mean, that, that really equals out to a Topeka, you know, that's money out of their wallet, right? And their monthly. And I imagine we'd split that.
I would say our board happened to come up with some of it.
But either way, you know, then that would probably damage our ability to do, you know, over those years to do some of the things that we had done salary-wise. So that's a, that's a significant amount, I think. We really do owe our administration and our employees and our partners, you all, of course you get paid, so we don't owe you anything. We owe our administration and our employees a great, great debt, you know, a great amount of gratitude just for, for being able to do this for us.
And I do have to point out that the negotiations with Dr. Robbins kind of helps as well. Jeremy will get to experience that.
He's a real fun-loving, he's a young guy, negotiations, I don't know.
As long as I can get him to smile, I know I'm doing good. So, okay, this next piece is talking about the telehealth benefits and that's going to be added as of October 1st. This is something that we've heard from our members for a number of years, that they wanted the opportunity to be able to do a face-to-face on an iPad, either, I call it tango, because that's what I have to do with my grandkid, be able to see them, but communicate with a physician, maybe because they can't get to the doctor's office. In Kansas, we have a lot of rural communities as well. So we did go out and partner, the company that we partnered with is American Well, to be able to offer this benefit. It's going into our book of business on 1-1, but we chose to add it to your group as of October 1st. Some of the things that, you know, those that have kids or, you know, you wake up in the middle of the night or it's, it's a weekend and you really don't want to go to urgent care and you know it's a cold, you can do this from the convenience of your home. If you have a teacher that's not feeling well, maybe they know it's sinus, rather than having to take off for a doctor's appointment or any employee of the district, you know, they could go make a phone call, maybe on their break, on their lunch hour, and talk with the physician. The physicians are all Kansas-based physicians, so if they're, if they're on vacation and they call in and let's say they go to Texas, they'll get a Texas physician, but if they're calling from Kansas, they will get a Kansas physician. They'll be able to pick and choose who they talk to as well. If they want to designate, I want to talk to a male physician or a female physician, they can do that. They might even know the physician that comes up to talk with them. The idea behind this was to give them that opportunity to do that. It should save the district money on office visits and urgent care visits because the reimbursement is less. It's going to cost the employee the same. The employee pays $30 to go to the doctor. It's going to cost them $30 to call a physician and do the face-to-face, but the reimbursement that we negotiated back to American Well is a lot less. So in addition to just the physician or just, you know, the, the normal things, colds and flu, they also have a behavioral health and counseling service known as teletherapy. And they're licensed therapists that will provide treatment for several conditions, ADHD, panic attacks, depression, you know. If a panic attack happens and you don't, you don't know what to do, maybe somebody around you doesn't know what to do, be able to call in on this piece of it and actually talk to someone that can calm you down, I think is, is an excellent. As, as Ms. McCarthy had mentioned during one of our insurance committee meetings, when I was talking about this, there are a lack of psychiatrists, psychologists, you know, to try to get into. Maybe it's a lot of drive time, et cetera. So I think this is going to be a huge benefit for the employees. So we will probably work with Misty on how to communicate this to the employees so that they're aware of this benefit. Yes.
I think you should point out to the board that if somebody calls in, they spend the 30 bucks and the guy sees them and says, hey, you need to go somewhere else and sees them, there's still another charge for that, so.
That's correct. Yeah, that is correct. And that's why I think where the education comes in. This isn't a replacement for a primary care physician. This is really not, you know, look at my arm and tell me if I've broken it type of thing. They would still need to go to the emergency room or urgent care, but, you know, just, just the basic things like I've got the flu, I don't feel well, kids with an earache, et cetera, those types of things. That's a very good point.
Any other questions, sir?
Okay. And the last thing I kind of wanted to talk about was kind of give you an update. We're very, very happy to have been able to do or not do, we didn't do the biometric screenings, but to offer the biometric screenings. They were done on two dates. The first date was April 28th at Jordani Middle School. There were 80 appointments that day, 69 participated. 60 of those met with our nurses for biometric counseling. So they had their biometrics performed, which was the finger prick. They did the height, the waist circumference. And then they got a printout and then they went over and talked to one of our nurses and they kind of explained what the printout meant. Here's where your blood sugar's at, or is my high blood, is my blood pressure high? In addition, they were able to talk to them about the disease management programs that we offer through the healthy options. And they did get 11 referrals on that first day. So you had 87% participation. The second day was May 26th at Eisenhower. 62 participated, so you had a 78% participation rate. Out of those 62, 55 agreed to do the counseling with the, with the nurses and 12 referrals were made into the DM programs. I just can't say enough for allowing us to be able to do this because the health and wellness of your group is, is, you know, what is, I don't want to say it's our motto because it's not, but it is, it is what we live for. I mean, that's, you know, we, we offer insurance with the same time with all of the changes that we've made in working with the provider community on value over utilization, you know, and, and making sure that people are going to the physicians and making sure that people have primary care physicians. And I know I'm not saying this right, this is why I should stick to my scripts, but we just so much appreciate the fact to partner with and hopefully this helps at each and ever renewal and when we come back here a year from now or almost a year from now and negotiate the renewal that it's, it's an easy renewal to negotiate. Some of the other things we've done, the disease management type of things, is we've hired Jane Shirley, who's our wellness coordinator. And Jane has worked with Misty in doing some education. She provided me a list of things that she's done. She comes to the insurance committees, the biometric screenings, the, also the HRAs, the health assessments that the employees do each year. We get an aggregate report. She comes and explains those types of things, kind of tells what some of the concerns are with their group. They did two dedicated runs where they actually called people on the phone and if we didn't have the right phone number, we were able to get the phone number to try to educate them about the, the programs and to entice them to enroll. So it was kind of a hit and miss, but we're hoping that just more spreading the word and with the backing of the insurance committee, that, that we can get more and more people into that program. Because it's just there to help them, assist them. You've had several completed. It's not like nobody's using it, but we know that there's other additional members that we know could benefit from it. They went to a K&amp;E meeting. Anytime, anytime you have anything to do with wellness, Jane is always there for you. We have a new, and I should have put a link on here, it just came out this week, all of our, all of our wellness tools and programs and, what are they called? The blogs, not the blogs, the videos, the webinars are all out there now, accessible to the public. So we, we didn't just leave it for just our members, but it's out there for the public. And so that's going to be at our next insurance committee meeting that we'll, we'll bring that up and show that. So, and Misty, maybe at some point, Jane or I could show you where it's at too, so you can use those. Guys have been a great partner and we very much appreciate our partnership.
Dr. Mickelson?
Just a quick question. Thank you for your work and providing and helping our employees stay healthy. I'm curious to know how we can expand the biometric screening penetration. We've got less than 10% of our employees took advantage of it last year, or of the 10%, less than 10% of people who enrolled in Blue Cross benefits took advantage of it last year. So how do we triple that, quadruple that, 80% penetration? How do we do that?
Absolutely. We, we need to. I think it's a matter of finding the time and working with the insurance committee and working with Mr. Robbins on scheduling them when we can. And I think that was, has always been the goal to enhance that. This was just a starting point, chose these two schools, kind of see what penetration we would get. You know, we, we had a few no-shows.
Right. But it seems like, I'd just like to see us expand that, just to let people know where they are and where they can improve and.
I wish Kelly was here because Kelly Moser, because she really took this on and really made it her own and got the information out and we prepared pamphlets and, and she did all the scheduling for it. And I, I know that we can get more in this year. You know, there are, I wish that we could force everyone to do it. Blue Cross kind of does. If we don't go do it, we have to pay 20 extra dollars for ours. But there are some people that do go to the physician and so they may not want to do the biometric counseling. And so what Blue Cross does for us is you either come and do your biometrics or we have to get a form from our physician stating that we did it. So there, and people think that, oh, it's Blue Cross, they're going to, they're going to know everything about me. Well, it's all strictly confidential. The district doesn't know anything. So it's getting that word out, making people feel better about it.
The exception of the blood glucose, I assume you could almost do this as a self, you know, you, you go to Dillon's and you get your blood pressure, you know, and you could, you could give everybody a tape measure and figure out how to do that kind of stuff. You know, I mean, it's not rocket science for most part. You could calculate how to do it, a mobile mobile, I think we go to this school this week and the next school the next week kind of thing.
Those are good ideas. We do have to fast, so we can't, you know, schedule them a whole day, so there is, you know, some timeframes in there. And then trying to work with the teacher's schedules, when they can get away. I think we did them at PD days. Yes, that's our goal.
So, Mr. Robbins, do you have any input? I mean, I know, your secretary tried to get things going with this, this, do you, do you have a feeling for why not very many people chose to do this?
Well, you know, the, when you look at the percentages for the first time through, we were pretty pleased with the percentages. We offered two opportunities, kind of as a pilot, to introduce the biometric screenings to our staff. We knew that the timing would be a challenge for many of our staff members. That's why we chose two professional development days to do it. The very last one just happened to be the last duty day for certified staff of the academic year. But there's some things that are being worked on and talked about in order to try to increase and improve the participation in biometric screens. At Elementary School, that will be August 3rd. We plan to not only conduct our board meeting there that evening, but also to have a ribbon cutting in a public open house so that the public can see the unveiling of our new facility and any board members that have not had an opportunity to walk through that, that fabulous structure will have a chance to do so. Also, at that meeting, on the agenda, we have our project management firm that is scheduled to give a bond update on all of our bond projects and how we're progressing there. We do have a monthly meeting where we review all of the progress associated with our bond projects and the board is very well represented in that discussion by Reverend Williams, who is in attendance at all of those meetings that occur on a monthly basis. Over the summer, in addition to the bond projects, there's a number of major maintenance projects that Rob Slights and his team undertook and worked on. In total, we had approximately 80 projects that were being performed in 31 different buildings over this summer period. And it's nice to be able to sit here and tell the board that none of those projects will be delayed to the point that it's going to affect the start of school when students return on August 14th. Now, I will say that we have a number of those projects that are going right down to the wire. We have a number of those projects that are going right down to the wire. going right down to the wire as far as being completed. And when I say right down to the wire, I mean targeted to be completed as late as August the 11th, prior to the last weekend before school starts. And just to kind of give you a flavor for where some of those projects are, one is at Highland Park, and it is a combination of a bond project with the last phase of the science classrooms being implemented there at Highland Park. And we also have a couple of major maintenance projects. We'll be putting flooring down in the science hallways and also replacing some greenhouse panels. We also decided after a tour that we need to do some work with the restrooms down in the science wing, the freshman academy wing. So we are completing that, and it will be complete well before the 11th. Pika High, the big project that we had there was the boiler replacement. It will probably be August 11th before we finish that particular project. In addition to the elementary component with Jardine, we also had a renovation that's taking place there at the middle school. We expect for that to go down to the wire August the 11th before that is ready. There is one small component of that remodel that will not be in place until after school starts, and that's storage cabinets in the music room for musical instruments. It will be sometime after school starts before those cabinets will be in. And what it ended up being was an oversight by the design team. They never were, or should have been, but it was, like I said, an oversight, and that's why we're late getting those installed. The science classrooms at Landon will be running down to the wire August the 11th. At McLure Elementary, the new canopy that we're putting out front at the main entrance will be August the 11th. At both McLure, the storm shelter, and also McCaffrey, we have a small problem that's not going to affect the start of school, but we have some moisture leakage in the gymnasium area of the storm shelter. We think that's coming from air conditioning units, but we're still in the process of chasing that down and trying to rectify that problem. Randolph Roof Replacement will go to August the 11th. At Scott, we're working on floor replacement throughout just about that entire building. Will be again August 11th before that is completed. The same is true with a condensate tank replacement at State Street. If you have not had a chance lately to drive by Whitson Elementary, please do so. That is the building that we're doing the window and door replacement, and it looks like a completely different and new school with that bronze coated window there. We also power washed the building to clean up the front facade a little bit on that, along with the window replacement. We are going to have four doors. They're not exterior doors, but they're interior doors that will not be in place by the time school starts. But again, that does not affect traffic flow for students, but we'll be about two weeks into school before we have those four doors that are in, in that project completed. Those are the major ones. The others that are going down to the wire really are not in buildings where we have students that would be returning to school. So again, we don't see any issue with school starting in any of the buildings where we have major projects. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Robbins and Mr. Sykes, for the 80-plus projects you've been overseeing over this summer. The last item is the school schedules on the first day of school. Board members, we just asked that if you have not told Mrs. Lister yet, whether it's the 14th, 15th, or both days that you want to visit schools, please let her know. If you've already emailed her, then she's noted that and updated your schedule. And then the schedule should be at your desk in terms of where we would be going. One slight adjustment that I want to point out to you that's different than past years, we thought everyone would want to see Jardine. Therefore, instead of meeting here at Burnett for someone to take you on your tour, we're going to meet at Jardine. That way, we all get a chance to welcome all those families and students, and then your tour guide will take you from Jardine on to the other places on your schedule. Again, if you want to see some other schools or make some adjustments, just let Miss Lister know, and she will add schools and make those adjustments outside of this meeting.
Any questions for Dr. Anderson?
The first day is August 14th. We are excited.
Okay. Go ahead and do.
Is there a convocation issue? There is the convocation, and on your schedule, the convocation is on, let's see if it is on the schedule. It is on August the 9th, and if it is not on the schedule, my apologies for that. It is on August the 9th. This year, we're doing something a little different. We will have the partners and retirees invited to the convocation in a reserved section of the auditorium. It will be at Washburn, as it was in the past. Mrs. Krueger, any other details about the convocation that you would like to share, such as the start time and parking?
We are asking people to carpool, which is because of something political of an issue last year, but Washburn, we can't make sure that we have additional parking available and stuff. Which would ask the start time, I want to say 8:30 off the top of my head. Yes, 8:30 at Washburn.
So at 8:30 time, and Ms. Krueger will email you those details. We'll make sure that all of our activities are updated on that calendar, so you have one sheet at each of the board meetings, so that you kind of can track along with that as well. But it is not on that particular schedule, but August the 9th.
It's in Andrew's letter as well.
Yeah, at 8:30. We look forward to seeing you there. We'll make sure that we look into some reserved parking for you, so that when you come in, you can come in and get out. Some teachers might stay around, and we know that you may have work and other items that you may need to get to. So we'll email you some information about reserved parking on their actual parking lot as well. Thank you for asking.
So we have one action item, and that's board member appointments for the 17, 18 academic year. Hopefully, you've all had a chance to look. There's not a lot of change. So I'll entertain a motion to accept that. There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Or read them up? Last and not least, board member comments. And Reverend Williams, since you're at the end of the table, you get to start.
Briefly, I responded to Miss Lister this week and asked to be included in the group. That goes to no sense, so thank you for the board for allowing me to do that and looking forward to it.
Unfortunately, the summit that I attend every year is at the same time as I said, so I'll be going to the Greatest Conversations Summit. But I'm appreciative, just as I see the district gearing up for the coming year, the excitement. I had an opportunity to sit in with the new principals, I believe it was, a couple of weeks ago, just to end and watch Dr. McDonald and Dr. Anderson just really give a presentation on how, not only to read the data, but how it's going to move forward. So it's exciting just to see those new additions that are exciting to help us make it to the next step. Also, I did get to attend, which I didn't mention last time, the summer concert that's sponsored by the foundation, and Mr. Yoho had given us a specific invitation, and I was pretty much blown away by the presentation this year. Not only the musicality of it, but it was the themes that they had chosen, that the young people really embraced, and reminded us just how talented our young people really are. Their vocals are just beautiful, the tone was beautiful, and they do some awesome work in a few, very few days. I believe it's the 30-day camp, summer camps? Yeah, awesome work, and so just something else for us to
Well, there was an event downtown celebrating freedom and went on all day, and I was just looking for my phone because I did take a picture, because we didn't have anybody there taking pictures. And one of the things that they did was to ask a group of Highland Park students who were being mentored by many of the people who were helping put on the freedom event, and they sang for the whole group that was there. They had put this together themselves. It was really, really wonderful. I was kind of, I had my camera, but I can't, I left my phone at home, so I will try to remember and bring the pictures in and show them. But it was, I was not prepared for them being there, and I wondered what all those kids were doing. And they had put this together themselves, practiced. It was wonderful. It was wonderful.
Just to let you know, I attended the breakfast with the principals this morning. I saw a new side of Mr. Robbins, executive chef. And I must say that it was pointed out to me, my Dr. Anderson, that he looks debonair with a hat and an apron on. And he told us at the time that he was the chef and that Mr. Dick was the cook. He wanted that. But the principals were very excited, and I walked in with a few and talked to a few, and I think they're ready for the school year, so.
Dr. Morrison, just to let you know, I did receive a call and inquiry from the Foods Network later on this afternoon.
Okay. With that concludes our business here.
Mr. President, I move, we go recess into executive session to discuss the latest negotiation proposals from the NEAT Association pursuant to the exception for employee negotiations under coma, and to discuss an individual employee's performance pursuant to the non-elected personnel exception under coma. And the meeting will resume in, I'm guessing, an hour. Is that safe? And then we have the personnel issue too, so. An hour means we would be back, we would come out of it at 9:20, 9:40.
Yeah, 8:40.
8:40. Oh, that's only seven. I'm sorry. Second.
Second. Any discussion? Read them up? Ms. Johnson?